I'm going to, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's 5:30. In the absence of President Davenport and Clerk Hildebrandt, who are both excused tonight, I will ask Treasurer McGrath to call the roll.
Ben Martenson.
President.
Leo Thomas-Garnett.
Here.
Kathy McGrath, here.
Consider approval of the agenda.
Aye, so moved.
A second?
You've got to call for the vote.
Yep. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Presidents' report. Three of the five members are in attendance tonight. Mr. Davenport and Mr. Hildebrandt are excused. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, September 12th, with an executive session at 5:00 and the business meeting at 5:30 if the executive session is necessary. Administrative reports.
Good evening. So, we're getting all set for back to school. It is coming fast. We've actually had students already in the building taking part in music through band, summer band programming. Football has started, volleyball has started. So, we've gotten our fall sports underway, cross-country. Football starts this week with a home game versus Phillips on Friday night at 4:00. And volleyball on Saturday has a four-team scrimmage at John Edwards High School at 9:00 a.m. So, this week, we're quite busy already with fall sports. Next week, new staff report on Wednesday and Thursday, although most have already been in the buildings and been doing, getting rooms ready and meeting with other staff about curriculum. Wednesday, August 22nd, at 6:00 p.m., we'll hold our ninth grade orientation program. All that, Kara's going to comment in a few minutes on the fifth grade program, but our ninth grade program, each, each fall, we do that. We really try to talk with the students and their parents about the differences between middle school and high school. And the importance that in high school, making sure that they are attuned to the credits that they are, that they're after and attuned to the, attuned to making sure that they've got a class schedule and, and really taking those next steps beyond high school, whether it be tech school or college or the world of work or apprenticeship or the military or whatever that next step is. So, that will be Wednesday evening, we'll be meeting with our ninth grade, ninth grade and parents. All staff report on the morning of August 28th for in-service. And of course, board members, you're certainly welcome to join us. We start at 7:45 with, with Small Continental Breakfast with our staff and we get underway with all of our introductions and things at that time. So, if you're available, you certainly feel free to, feel free to join us that morning. It will continue with teaching staff on the 29th and 30th. On the evening of August 29th, we'll be hosting our back-to-school nights here at the elementary starting at 4:00. At the high school at 5:45, there will be a picnic meal held in each cafeteria, the high school cafeteria as well as the elementary cafeteria for parents and students to enjoy that evening. New this year, specifically at the middle and high school, we're going to try something that a lot of schools in the area and all over have, have been doing in more recent years. We're going to try picture night on back-to-school night. Couple of things that allows us to do. One is hopefully we can get our student IDs and staff IDs turned around, well, student IDs primarily, turned around very quickly. Staff IDs, if staff are available. We're, we're going to try staff pictures as well, kind of in conjunction with some of this, at least for the middle school, high school. But get those things turned around and into students' hands right after the start of the school year. As well, it's less time lost in the classroom. Picture take day is an all-day event. And sometimes when a class gets called down, they're down there for an hour, even longer at times. So, it really doesn't take that long to take the pictures. It's just the organization behind it. And so, our photographer has agreed to give this a try this year. So, we're going to get some things out on social media yet in the next few days, as well as do some announcements through our infinite campus and other places. And it was in our newsletter this, this past month as well. So, that, like I said, is going to be new this year and we'll give it a shot, see how it works. And then on Tuesday, September 4th, we're welcoming back all of our students to school. So, the other item that I had on the report was just a brief update on facility projects. We've gotten several checked off and we're still working on some. The planter that was damaged at the high school has, via a driver this past winter, has now been replaced. The vast majority of that was covered through our insurance, minus the deductible essentially. So, that has been replaced. Culpse of Stratford did start on the cupola project. They're working to get the facade installed. I did speak with Mike Culp today, who's the project manager, both in the design phase and the onsite. He's doing a lot of the work himself onsite. And there may be a little bit of delay on a few items with it. One of their, one of their providers, their router went down this past week and so he thinks it'll be, might be, should be finished up by the time school starts. That shouldn't be an issue, but there may be a couple of days where they're, they're waiting on pieces to get finished up. So, but overall, they've been working on that project for the past week and a half or so. They did remove the original copper louvers that were in the cupola and removed those as well as the windows that were originally in the cupola. The reasons for removing those was stability and better weather sealing. Some of those items were rotting in various locations. So, they're, you know, their, their goal is stabilize, weatherize. I spoke with him specifically on that today, on water intrusion. There are many places where water has gotten in. And it was evident inside the building with damage on third-floor ceilings and places, even in the past two, two and three years, along with the rotting siding that was on there. He, he made comment that the previous siding was not, was not really sealed. It wasn't, wasn't sealed, it wasn't, you know, put up there in a way that was going to permanently try to keep the weather out. So, we did run into a snag this week with the weather vane atop. Originally, Culpse had hoped to preserve that weather vane for us, possibly do some repair work on it, but preserve it. They are unable to preserve that at all. We can have the weather vane, but it can't go back up. It is rotting and rusting and corroding severely in places. It would be a danger of falling if they put it back up. It is just that, in that bad of shape. They have come to us with a proposal to recreate it basically, out of stainless steel. And we're looking at how we can make that work and still do it within the constraints of the project. Something does need to go on the top because that is a vital piece, the sealing off the top of the cupola. As funny as that sounds, it's part of that structure and something needs to be up there to finish the very top of that piece. So, we're, we're going to explore some options there and look and see how we can get that done. We did save the louvers and windows that were taken out. We do have those in storage at this time and some historical value to those pieces. Some monetary value, there's a lot of copper on those pieces, so. Elementary school, the roofer, if you walked in today, you probably couldn't help but notice the roofer's been at work to get this project completed. And we are also expecting this next week for the kindergarten doors to be installed. So, the kindergarten area will have its doors installed. And in fact, this past week, in terms of our school safety pieces, the new fencing was installed. There's still a few pieces that need to be taken care of with that, but the majority of that work is complete at this time. We're working with CISA-10 on the timeline for installation of security film on doors and windows that will go on yet. And as you can imagine, there were six or 700 schools that all received grants and the security film was probably involved in the majority. Probably the benefit for us is we worked with CISA-10, which is a facilities provider. And I think that put us into queue a lot sooner than a lot of schools that just went through this independently. So, working with them as a consultant and advisor on this, I think will benefit us in that. We're also working with them on a second round of safety and security grants that the state announced. It will not be as much money, but again, would allow us to get some projects that are, that we need to get completed, completed. We're looking at some key issues at the middle school, high school and, and safety issues involving doors and locks there and just making sure that we have updated as much as we can there, as well as a fire door that needs some updating. And again, we're looking at, seeing if we can use these, this next round of grant monies for safety and security to accomplish some of those items. The other piece that we would look at there would as well be updating our crisis plan. And we know there's some things there and that's, again, we can use some of that grant for the help on getting that up to compliance, fully with the new state laws that have come out. We've already started to look at it, but that is our facility update and that is our, our back-to-school update. Any questions?
This looks nice.
It's new. It's different, but again, it keeps our, this is going to see, you know, the big thing is trying to secure those areas so that, that during the school day, that it's, that we don't have people just coming onto property. Our plan is when school is not in session, to continue to keep our playgrounds open and accessible, so having those spaces open so that there is a community, you know, some community access. So, it's not, not to shut it off with, with, you know, with the exception of the school day.
Really? There'll be padlocks on the big gates then?
Yep, there will be locks on those, so.
So, we'll look at having it getting in an OX box, I'm guessing, for fire and safety?
Yep.
For those people?
Yep.
Okay. Fifth grade orientation and super kids. Ms. Christie.
Along with Mr. Komen's report on beginning the school year activities, we once again are going to do an orientation this year for incoming fifth graders at the middle school. What we have done in the past and what we will continue to do is we, Ms. Schroeder and I are going to talk with some eighth graders and we like to let them kind of lead those fifth graders. So, usually what they do is they come in, we give them a tour of the school, even though most of them have already been in it. Some of them, there are some places they haven't seen. In small groups, they get to ask questions and then we tackle the dreaded lockers and lock combinations. So, depending how long that takes, we do a couple icebreaker activities and just kind of get to know the school. And it seems to work well when it's the eighth graders that are leading it. They take a little more ownership in that and the fifth graders also get to see familiar faces and so on. So, that is August 23rd. As far as the elementary school, during our in-service days, we are going to start our training for our new curriculum, K2. We have the trainers from, part of the, part of the cost of that curriculum was included trainers. So, they are going to come in and meet with each grade level, K1, 2 separately and go through all of the information so the teachers feel comfortable. They've already, some of them have already come in and asked to, to peek at the, the supplies and, you know, they're chomping at the bit to look at the teacher's additions and all those things. But the job of those trainers is to make sure that everyone feels confident starting off the year. They will come back again if we need them to, just to make sure that things are on, on course because it is, it is a, you know, consecutive K1, 2. We want to make sure that everybody is, is where they need to be. Third and fourth grade then are going to be exploring some other options for English language art, English, English language arts for next year. And so, we're going to be maybe piloting a couple of things or trying out a couple of things and seeing what works best as they move on after K2. So, we're pretty excited about the new curriculum because it covers, you know, not just reading, writing, spelling, phonics. There's, there's a lot in it and it's exciting, a little overwhelming, but also exciting. So, that's about it.
Questions? Thank you. Good, thank you. I don't see anybody requesting to address tonight. Donna, Max, you have something you would like to say? No? All right. Thank you for, for being here. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consider approval in minutes of the past meeting, July 18th.
So moved.
I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Financial reports, including, including gifts. Do we have any, anything today? I'll consider a motion for approval of the financial reports for, for August.
Make motion.
Second.
Motion and a second for the approval of the financial reports. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. There is no unfinished business. Moving on to new business. Consider approval of the 2018-19 co-curricular positions.
I'd ask your approval of the group of people listed here. We have some changes going on. Senior class advisor, Mrs. Miller, has retired from that position after many years.
Resigned.
Mrs. Miller has abandoned the position, resigned from that position after many years of faithful service to the senior class. And Mrs. Dornell has, has agreed to graduate up one grade level from the junior class advisor. Mrs. Leonard brings with us some experience from previous positions and is excited to come on and take on the prom as the junior class advisor. Mrs. Doran has graciously as well stepped forward and they're the sophomore class advisor. And Mrs. Waltonberg has stepped forward and offered her experience to our middle school volleyball team. And we're excited about having her onboard, so I'd ask your approval of all of these changes.
Can we do this in a single motion?
You can.
Okay. Any objection to that? Okay. I would ask for a motion for the approval of the co-curricular positions as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Consider approval of the 2018-19 district handbooks.
So, the two handbooks, and I will comment on the employee handbook and I'll have Ms. Christie comment on any changes in the K4 student handbook, but with the employee handbook, we gave you changes at glance. I'll just, I'll go through them and just let you know. Really, a couple of the changes really have to do with updating just the information that yearly needs to be updated, putting in the, the new rates of pay and, and those items. So, that, that is a piece that is yearly on there. Under the benefits side, the one item that really is a big change will be that the board will, we are, we are sunsetting the provision for the, for the health savings account money. That was something that was, when we originally talked two years ago with our, with our insurance change, that was intended to be a one-year infusion into health savings accounts. The board last year kept that on for one additional year as the state was potentially changing the law in terms of plans. The state did not change the law and what had to be done in that way. So, at this time, it'd be appropriate to sunset that as we had originally intended. Just some updates to contacting for subbing for both food service and custodial staff. Another piece that is being added into the employee handbook is our incentive programs. For the past two years, we've had incentive programs in place for both our support staff and our teaching staff. Those have been programs that have existed on paper in the district but have not been formally put into the handbook. This would just give them a place to be as a document essentially. Now, they're going to be part of this document. Obviously, the programs can be amended or changed at any point. So, if the board for some reason wants to change those programs and them, that's still part of that and it's, and that's stated as so in the handbook. But the programs themselves are really just the programs that the board has had in place for the past two years. So, really, they both have to do with goal setting. Well, the, the support staff piece has to do with goal setting. The professional staff piece really has to do with other duties and things that staff members can gain points for and then they're paid appropriately on the points. This past year, the minimum point value is $25 that an employee could have for one point. The max is $75. This year, it was, ended up being paid out as 59, about $59 a point. And that's simply based on how many staff members are using the program and based on what's budgeted in there. So, so again, no, no changes overall that are significant to that program, just simply putting it in, into this document so that everybody knows where it is and can see it. A couple of items, our alternative benefit plan, which is cash in blue. One item with cash in blue is just cleaning up the language, continuing to, you know, the attorney for the school district, Ruder Ware, that law firm checked over this language and wanted us to just make some updates to make sure we're explaining how the program works within all the legalese that needs to be explained. The contribution for current, for employees that were current as of, as of this past school year, those contributions remain unchanged. For new employees coming onboard, we've ratcheted back that contribution to $4,500. Both are extraordinarily generous contributions. Even for new employees, $4,500 is a very generous contribution. For our current employees, we're not, we're not taking that away from them. Their contribution will continue to be the, the 6984 and as it has been for the last couple of years. But as we're, we're just looking for different areas to make sure that we are, different areas that we can be economical with things and still be attractive. That is one of the areas that's, it's been a very attractive benefit, but with new staff coming on, it was an area we thought we could make a change and, and see some, see some savings yet be still very attractive. Lisa's done quite a bit of discussion with other business managers. $2,000, most schools would say, is extraordinarily generous. So, for us to ratchet this back is not, again, for the new, new staff coming onboard. And we let new staff know as we hired them that, we let them know that that amount had not been yet determined. So, just continuing on, just cleaning up some of the language regarding leaves and absences and who to contact, bringing the personal leave. Really, the, the personal leave, we're not changing the dates or necessarily how it's used, it's just making sure that the language is consistent throughout between support and professional staff. It would allow, it really dissuades personal leave, that first week of school, the last week of school, but does allow for the use if there's an extenuating circumstance. So, still would allow for that. Really, just some updates again to the legalese in terms of our, some of our language as well, in terms of the other post-employment benefits and just making sure that the, the legalese of all that is where the attorneys are comfortable with it. With professional growth, as budgets over the last several years have declined and we have, a couple of things have happened with professional growth. We have gotten a lot more grant money more recently for professional growth. So, we've had a lot of staff out on grant-funded professional growth. Donna, I think maybe had done some teach grant work. And so, missing a couple of days with this computer teach grant, the staff hasn't been utilizing the other pieces of professional growth. And Kathy, maybe you remember this, there used to be administratively directed and a staff directed. We've really just combined that under one pot now and said, we're just going to have a professional growth thought. As people need it, we'll have it. And when it's gone, it's gone. As we've reduced budgets in areas, that's been an area. But what's helped is we've had some grant monies that have really supported professional growth in other areas. So, that's really helped fund that. And so, it really just brings the professional growth under one roof now in terms of the budget and maybe a little easier to administer for the time being. Staff are, I wouldn't say there's a, a lack of opportunities, there certainly are opportunities out there, it's just we're getting funding for it in some other areas. So, assignment transfer language really brings that in compliance with what the policy is and how the policy words that. The change, there's a change to middle school, high school, student council. What we're really doing is going to two positions. There would be a high school student council person and they will assist the middle school and vice versa. There would be a middle school student council person who will assist the high school. This past year, there was a high school person and a high school assistant and then a middle school person and a middle school assistant. We're really bringing that under one roof now. And in talking with the supervisors for student council, they thought that that was very workable and that that idea came from the leads of both of those. So, and just a few other changes and just getting language updated, so to what our current practice is. Any questions on employee handbook?
I am glad to see that the district has maintained the system they have for leaves and absences with Stacy's continuing to serve as the, as the contact.
Yep.
In a small district like this, I, I don't know if you guys have issues with that or not, but having worked in other districts where they have various automated services that are allegedly more efficient, I'm, I'm really glad to see that in this district, if you're sick or if you need to be gone, if there's something going on at the last minute, you can call and talk to a live human who you know and, and you can leave information about your sub or you can ask for somebody or you can, you can personalize this in ways that the, the automated systems are really hard to use in that regard. I'm, I'm really glad to see that we've been managing to continue that because.
Probably the biggest thing there is, and I think we did get a bit better this past year with it. I think the staff got a bit better, but it's just continuing to get, you know, with 30-plus teaching staff and then support staff, just getting everybody to realize that the job of coordinating all that is extraordinarily difficult. So, to be as timely as possible with requests, to be as flexible as possible when asked to assist in doing those things just makes everybody's life in the end easier.
Right.
And so, I think that's, I certainly think that's gotten a bit better this past year.
I think, I think it plays to the idea in, in the school district of everybody, helping everybody out and watching everybody's back and.
Yep.
A colleague down the hall being able to fill in for you if, if you have to leave, if you have an appointment, if there's something going on. Maybe that doesn't work as well in bigger districts, but that's one of the beauties of Fort Edwards. So, good, thank you. Anything, any other comments regarding the employee handbook? Do, do we want to approve these together again or do we need them separately?
You can do them together, you can do them separately. It's.
Okay. Any objection to doing them together?
Let's do them together.
Okay, then let's, let's hear the, the elementary handbook changes in terms of, of that.
Not, not as many changes, you have them at a glance, so I won't reread all of them. In, in a nutshell, the, the main thing we did was change the policy numbers to the new and appropriate policy language. And then also, I noticed that, that student handbook ended up, there's a lot of things people have added over the years or things that have been added and other things that could have been taken out. So, we went through and just kind of changed some of the, took out some of the wordiness and some of it was kind of more of a narrative than it was, you know, than it was a handbook which it was supposed to be. So, we. So we pared it down a little bit, it took, like I said, took some of the wordiness out of some of the things that were repeated in three different places, so we may have saved a tree or two just by doing that, I'm not sure, but that was about it. If you look at your changes at a glance, there's nothing too earth-shattering, but.
Any additional comments or questions regarding either of these documents? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the employee handbook and the K-4 student handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for that approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consider approval of transportation contract with Lamers.
Worked with Lamers this past month to look at our transportation contract. The way the contract is written, the negotiations, from year to year, there's a CPI floor and a ceiling, and that's really where the negotiations could start. Lamers has been, the last couple of years, we've had some conversation about where CPI is and where teaching staff and professional and support staff are in terms of the CPI and any raises that might come. We've had some discussion about inflation in those items. And Lamers has been very responsive to those discussions. So this year, for the second year in a row, they came back with a proposal that was under what their starting floor was. Their starting floor was 2.8 percent, they came back with a 2.5 percent. Their primary cost driver is employees. They, if you notice the signs out in front of the schools, they're paying a heck of a bonus to get people to drive bus. So there is, you know, the economy, the way it's rolling right now, finding people is actually getting more and more difficult. So their biggest reason for this is just simply employee costs and trying to attract drivers. And so, you know, I think that, you know, this again keeps, inflation right now is actually running higher than the 2.8, it's running 2.9 and the consumer, well, the Consumer Price Index is running 2.9. So, you know, they've come in below that and, you know, so I think that's, I think this is a fair contract for this year moving forward. Again, we can have these conversations every single year with them and, you know, and keep pressing our case, and like I said, they've been very responsive the last couple of years to that. So I think they were very responsive the year that we basically went to them and said the CPI essentially for the school is zero. And I think they understood that conversation at that time and have continued to be responsive, so.
Okay. Questions?
Bless the school bus drivers, is all I say.
Yeah.
Not an easy job.
A difficult, a difficult job-
Right.
-that is very underappreciated a lot of the time. Between weather and naughty kids and goofy drivers, yeah, understood. Anything further? Ask for a motion to approve the contract with Lamers?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the transportation contract with Lamers Bus Lines for the 1819 school year. Not hearing any further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consider approval of cooperative agreements 66.03, 01 with the Nacusa and Wisconsin Rapids Schools.
So each year, we have cooperative service agreements that we negotiate with Nacusa School District and the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools. It's possible as well to have these with other schools besides those, but those are neighboring schools and where we have most of this purpose. These agreements are put in place, I'll give you, for instance, there are some services for students that, being a very small school, would be extraordinarily costly for our school to provide, and so we contract with a neighboring school to provide that service. Some may be in special education, things such as Project Search as well through the Wisconsin Rapids School District, which provides some very specific services. Those would be examples. These agreements are student-specific, so we won't go into the nature of each individual agreement. They are often driven by an individualized education plan, an IEP through special education. With Wisconsin Rapids as well, we have some virtual pieces out there. And so, these are agreements that can cut both ways as well, but I will tell you, they are generally based on the open enrollment rate. So for instance, if we have a student attending Nacusa Public Schools, it's going to be based on the open enrollment rate. Now, these contracts say, have language in them that basically says it's the estimated dollar amount or whatnot. Again, some of that's because rates can change and/or services can change. So these are student-specific, we'd like to get them in place before the school year starts and again, to make sure the students are most often going with, no, they wouldn't notice that service was renewed or not, so we'd ask your approval of these.
So it's a case by case, basically?
It is, but, you know, I'll give you the example, intellectually disabled services, we don't have that program, so we work with Nacusa Schools, they provide the services for us, so it's, although each student is individually contracted, that's overall the service we're provided or being provided to our district and our students, so we have our students attend there. There may be cases where there's specific services such as if there needs to be a one-to-one pair of professional aid or if there's hearing services, and some of those things are then included, so. I will tell you, the dollar amounts, they're estimated at this point, and I can tell you on those contracts, we already know those dollar amounts and that's why they say they're estimated. We know that the open enrollment rate is 72-
72.53.
53, so those contracts have different rates in them, but we know we're paying the 72.53 and that's why the contracts say estimated at or, you know, it's, so there is a little bit of flexibility there, but. And again, we, so, I'll give you an example, total aid, taxes and everything, a Port Edward student is about $10,800, that's what we see for a Port Edward student. While if we have a student who's attending the virtual program through Wisconsin Rapids, it's going to be 72.50 whatever that rate is that will pay Wisconsin Rapids. Port Edward Schools will still retain the difference.
73, 72.
73, 72.
73, 72.
So, but yeah, these are very individualized and they're typically driven, in the cases of special education, usually driven by an IEP. And the IEP is a legal contract that we essentially work out with the parent and through the school district, so.
Now, does this, does this proposal allow for additional contracts on a continuing basis should a student arrive as a resident in our district-
Well, these are all residents, so-
These are resident students that are going to neighboring districts.
Neighboring districts.
Should a kid appear midway through the year, then we would see another one of these-
Yep.
-providing services should it be determined that the child needs that type of instruction.
Yeah, and typically, I was going to say, probably on your board agenda, two, three times a year, you'll see 66 agreements come through. You know, and I just wanted to mention it a little more specifically tonight, I know that with Ben just coming on the board, it's, we don't typically talk about the specific nature of each agreement, so that's why I wanted to at least give that general overview of what they are, because we can't talk about specific nature, at least in the open session piece, because it's, that privacy issues, but I can at least give you the general nature of why we do it, so.
Services are there for students through the other schools.
Yep, and that need those services, so. And it, like I said, it truly can cut both ways, so, but it's, they are, you know, it's really, these are always done really with the best interest of the student in mind. I mean, that's what's in the best interest of the student, so.
Very good. We're set with that then. Opportunity for individual-
You have to make a motion.
We didn't, we didn't do that, sorry. My apologies. We have a motion?
No.
Okay. Call for a motion to approve the cooperative service agreements?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Opportunity for individual comment. Kathy?
I just would like to thank all of the student council members that helped with the Fun Fest and Monarch Festival on both Friday night and Saturday. It couldn't happen without their help. They were, they were working hard, it was hot and there were lots of students there Friday night and all day Saturday and they were helped with a smile and anything I asked them to do, they were right on it, so we certainly appreciate their help.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to, good luck to the volleyball and the football teams and the fall sports that are coming up. See, they've been working hard out in the fields and in the gyms, so it's good to see them preparing for upcoming season. The janitors and people around the staff have been, buildings are looking good and always working hard, it's getting to be crunch time here, but things are looking good from the inside and the outside and a lot of the community members are, you know, seeing improvements and, you know, like to see improvements, there's no doubt about it, so. Good work on that and keep it up.
I'd like to formally welcome Ben to the board. A considerable number of us, myself, Carrie, now you, have originally come to this by appointment. That's a, you know, you kind of drop into the middle of something and you sort of hit the ground running and hope that you don't stumble, which I'm sure you won't. I want to formally welcome you to the process. Unfortunately, I'm going to be gone the last week of August and I will miss the opportunity to greet the staff at the in-service on the, you know, in that timeframe. I just want to, you know, thank the people who have worked hard all summer and the maintenance staff and the vendors who've been working to make the repairs and improvements in our facilities. Want to make sure that all of our returning staff and especially our new staff recognize what a special place Port Edwards is and what a meaningful experience we have here for the young people who are in our care. The kids who come to us every day come from every range and every spectrum of the community that you can imagine, rich, poor, needy, with every benefit. A lot of these kids come to our classrooms and our classrooms are the high point of their day. We are the, we are the best thing in their lives and we have to always hold in our forefront that we have a real responsibility to do the very best job we can to ensure that these kids are provided with opportunities, with safety, with respect, and with every possible chance to succeed. There, as I said last year, if you think about the classes that you were in as a kid, you don't remember third grade, you remember Ms. Johnson. You don't remember first grade, you remember Mrs. Schmickley. You don't remember kindergarten, you remember Mrs. McGrath. Let's do our best to see that we have a good year and our kids do likewise. We have established dates for future board meetings. September meeting will be Wednesday, the 12th, with an executive session at 5:00, business meeting at 5:30. October meeting, the regular meeting, is the 10th, again, 5:00 and 5:30. And the budget hearing and annual meeting on Monday, the 29th, starting at 6:00, again here in the elementary, I am C. That being said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.